Well, it just works much better, I guess.
They do our code enforcement, stuff like that, and they send down the guns.
So, gee, how you doing, man?
Six o'clock. Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Holbrook City Council, regular city council meeting on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, time is six o'clock, six P M. Role call, everybody is in attendance. We'd like to start off with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Pack, followed by an invitation by Kit Myers. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father God, we thank you tonight for your promised presence with us. And we thank you, Father, that you are concerned and care about the details of our lives. And so, Father, we just invite your wisdom to be with this council tonight, that you might intervene on our behalf, that our city might stand out in the state as a place that you are honored, Father, and that the values that are important to you will be our shared community values. Father, bless these proceedings now, and we ask it in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Item number four, consent agenda of the February fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Everybody's had a chance to read through them. Any questions or concerns about any of the minutes? All right, hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move that we accept minutes on second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving February fourteen, twenty twenty four meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, call the public for non-agenda items.
There is one item.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'd like to invite Nancy Brella, who's the Director of Catholic Charities, to the podium. She'll have three minutes. And our clerk will let you know when your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. First, I'd like to say thank you for serving our city. And so my topic for tonight goes along with the topic that I spoke on last, which was some of the motels in Holbrook and the conditions of the motels that people are having to live in because of the lack of housing in Holbrook. So, I know that right now there's a policy that if anyone wants to put a trailer on their property or into a trailer court, that the trailer has to be no more than ten years old, I believe. Five? Oh, five. So...
No, it's ten.
It is ten.
Okay. Five, ten. I would ask that the council, the zoning, whomever would take care of it, could maybe consider that being, what, raised from five or ten, whatever it is, to something higher? For the purpose that Holbrook needs housing. And with the economy being the way that it is, you know, everything is so expensive. I know of a few people who have property that has tried to put a trailer on their property and can't find anything in their budget in that age limit of ten years. Also, I know of a couple of trailer court owners, you know, that have empty spaces in their lots, that if they could, you know, get three or four trailers, maybe a little bit older than ten years, you know, then that would be housing for the community. That would be another four families in a house instead of in a motel or wherever else they're living. So, that's my request, if that could be considered. You know, I know that we consider property value and so forth, you know, but when you have a trailer court, that you already have a number of trailers that are twenty and thirty and forty years old, you know. Putting it in a trailer that's ten years old, fifteen years old, you know, I don't think it's gonna hurt the sight of the trailer court. But it could, okay, but it could help the owners get more housing.
All right, thank you very much. We will ask planning and zoning to look into that, or to see if there's any potential changes on that. Thank you. All right, item number six, call the public for agenda items.
There are none.
All right, item number seven, new business, Navajo County Sheriff's Office annual update. We'll have Chief Deputy Swanti and Lieutenant Williams. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, good evening, Mayor, council staff. Thank you very much for allowing the Sheriff's Office to come in here and speak with you tonight on a little bit of an update from twenty twenty three. My name's Brian Swanti. I'm the Chief Deputy for the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, speaking to you tonight on behalf of Sheriff David Klaus. With me came Tori Gorman. She is our Public Information Officer, so all the Facebook stuff that you see, she generates all of that. And everybody knows Lieutenant Jerry Van Winkle. I brought him in here this evening, and he's like a rock star here at the Holbrook City Council Chamber. So Jerry is in charge, he's the patrol lieutenant in charge of patrol operations for the northern part of the county. So basically, like fourteen mile hill, all to the north, and then to include Heber. So Jay's got a pretty large patrol area that he's responsible for. So a couple of things, just a couple of bullet points wanted to hit before we get into the Drug Task Force presentation is, I'm sure you guys all remember a big campaign that took, that started to take place around, I believe it started in eighteen into nineteen, with the passing of the jail district tax for the county. Some areas it was, it was supported. There was other areas where it wasn't supported, but I do want to give a report that the jail district is doing very well. It has really relieved a lot of pressure off of the Navajo County General Fund in order to maintain the jail. We have a, we have an old jail, but we do have a very good jail here in our county, and it's run very well also. We maintain, we can hold about four hundred and twenty inmates in there. We run a daily average right now, anywhere between two twenty and two fifty right now. So we've got a lot of room. So Chief Christensen, you know, you can tell your guys, there's plenty of bed space.
Hey, we taking off out there.
In additionally to, in addition to the jail district rewards, basically, if you will, that has allowed the jail to do, to set up some additional programs within the jail. I don't know if some of you have seen the ARC, the Animal Rescue and Rehabilitation Center, where the Navajo County Animal Control can now bring animals to the jail, where we have an old section of the jail that's now set up for animal rescue and rehabilitation that is then coordinated or done by inmates. So we use it as a, as a program to help with an inmate. We've found if they're busy and are working towards a purpose, they have, they have a lot better success while in custody and then also when they exit the jail and enter back out into the community. So it's a kind of, that's one program. Then we've also, we're doing many other programs with peer counseling, some of our reentry programs and whatnot, which we've also received some grants for through the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to help support some of these jail programs, to help our inmates transition back into the community. We're, there's, there was, two years ago, the county received a significant amount of money for the ARPA. I'm trying to remember, it was the Recovery After COVID Funding that came in. The county received a significant amount from that. About three million dollars was peeled out from that to support a regional public safety communications program. Quick, a quick thumbnail on that, the Sheriff's Office worked with four radio towers throughout the county. That is not enough. We have, we have added an additional eight radio towers to expand our police radio communications, which is also designed for all law enforcement agencies within Navajo County to utilize. So it's not just a Sheriff's Office project. This was a multi-agency regional program. We've been able to tie the Sholo Dispatch Center together with the Navajo County Dispatch Center direct. So we have two regional dispatch centers that back each other up and are working much more hand in hand than they were in the years past. In addition to the ARPA funds that we were able to get there, we got an additional three point two million dollars through the state of Arizona on some border, border security funding that has added to that. So we've been able to add additional radio infrastructure up on the Navajo Nation and also down in the southern part of the county on the White Mountain Apache Reservation, in addition to providing quite a few multi, multi-frequency radios that have been distributed around the county. We also, we received a separate, in fact, we just received the award letter last week. One million dollars was given to the Navajo County Major Crimes Apprehension Team, which is, I'm gonna talk about here in a little, in a little bit. This was state legislative money, or state appropriated funds that came from the Borders, Border Strike Force, which that was built under Governor Ducey. Governor Hobbs kind of reallocated those funds from the Department of Public Safety and reallocated them to local law enforcement to support border enforcement and drug enforcement activities relating directly to the border, which I'll get into some of those concerns and some of those issues that we deal with here. But just received a million dollars for that to help with the, with the personnel costs that come along with having the task force. And as always, the city of Holbrook, there's always an invitation out there to have an officer or a detective attached to the Major Crimes Apprehension Team. And I'm now able to pay seventy-five percent of their salary and employer-related expenses to have, have an officer, a task force officer assigned to the task force. In years past, that has been capped at about forty thousand dollars. In some cases, now at seventy-five percent, that's gonna jump up to around eighty, around eighty thousand dollars roughly, depending on the agency that will be able to reimburse for that position. So that was, that was a huge, that was a huge win there. We also have received some state allocated funding for a, we're calling it the Criminal Investigations Support. So with the development of the Major Incident Task Force, I know that the state pushed billions of dollars into this thing for the Department of Public Safety to be a regional outside agency, if you will, independent investigator for use of force investigations. We in our county here, we have a regional task force that all agencies are participating in, and we are then, we have met the new legislative requirements for, for an outside agency investigation on a, on a major use of force type of scenario. So we have funding for that to help support that. So, which, which is nice from the state, finally. We were able to get a regulation that they put on us, and they gave us money to support it. So that, we were very grateful for that. That came in last year. Our regional dispatch, as you guys well know, the city of Holbrook Police Department is dispatched through the Navajo County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center, along with Holbrook Fire, Holbrook EMS, Joseph City Fire, Sun Valley, and the Petrified Forest, and Animal Control, are all through our dispatch center here in the north. We, we have great partnership with the city of Holbrook on that. Last year alone, the Dispatch Center handled fifty-three hundred calls that came in that were dispatched to your police officers. So fifty-three hundred calls came into this center that then were dispatched specifically to the city of Holbrook police officers. We also, two thousand and seventy-five nine-one-one calls came in specifically for the city of, the city of Holbrook. That pretty much kind of sums it up there with, as far as the, as the update on the Sheriff's Office. If there's not any questions or anything, I'll move into the MCAT presentation.
Any questions?
I will say I, I do appreciate the app that the county has put out.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Very informational.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that feedback. And, and yes, we are, we're, we're doing a lot of push information on, you know, push, important information if there's a road closure or something like that. We're still trying to get up to speed on that, get that moving, but it has a lot of great information in that app. So it's free to download. There's some instructions on there that say put in your location, and I've heard people say, I'm not telling the sheriff where I'm at. We have, we don't track that. We have no idea where you're at. But the GPS will follow you or something, but we don't track any of that. But thank you for that feedback. Thank you. Okay, so it's hard for me to see that, so I'll use my copy here. So drugs, drugs and currency seizures in Navajo County, and we broke this down, twenty-two is on the left and twenty-three is on the right. So in twenty-two, we had four hundred and seventy-one point two pounds of methamphetamine seized in our county. Now that is, that, these, these drug amounts here are a combination of what's seized on the street and also what is being interdicted as it's traveling through our county. So, so this is street operations and also drug, highway drug interdiction numbers. So we had a slight drop, we had a slight drop from twenty-two to twenty-three. Heroin, we had a severe drop in that. Cocaine, cocaine was also a severe drop. But we're, I'm gonna get over down here to the, these things are not lining up the way I like them here, but fentanyl. The fentanyl pills in twenty-two, two point one million fentanyl pills were seized in our county. In twenty-three, one point eight. Now that looks like that's a drop. In actual pills, it is a drop. But you look down to the next one, the next level there, fentanyl powder, two point four pounds of powder. Think about that when, you know, when you think about flour, you're buying flour at the store. What is the, what is that, that package? Is that a couple pounds worth? That much, or a little bit more, of, of fentanyl powder, which is the raw ingredient for making fentanyl pills. That fentanyl powder, that two point four pounds equated to over ten thousand pills. Another aspect, the fentanyl liquid. This is something we've just recently started seeing. It was actually towards the end of twenty twenty-three where we're seeing fentanyl in a liquid form. The intelligence and the information that we were getting is this, this was mind-boggling to us. We hadn't heard or seen of any of this. We did figure out, though, that a hundred and seventeen gallons that we seized along our interstate equated to just shy of a half a million pills. So you add all that up, and I don't have the math there, but it's in excess of two point one million pills. But we're just seeing it in a different, in a different form. Fentanyl in the, in, through the DEA and HIDE that we work through, methamphetamine has been the, has been threat number one for as long as I can remember. And I've been in the game quite a long time. Methamphetamine has been the number one public threat when it comes to drugs since the nineties. And I'm sure the chief would agree with me on that. Just last year, fentanyl passed methamphetamine as far as the number one threat to our communities here in Arizona. The next slide here is some proactive enforcement efforts. Two hundred and twenty-eight arrests compared to two hundred and forty-three. Our, our agency assists kind of went down a little bit. We, we had some manpower concerns or manpower issues in the task force. So as a result, things typically kind of drop a little bit when you have fewer, fewer people. But that's, that's where we were at, a little bit reduction in the agency assists. Our D T Os, D T O means Drug Trafficking Organization. And basically, the definition for a D T O is, is, is two or more people under an organization conducting criminal activity, i.e. drug sales. That's what equates to a drug trafficking organization. So you can have one very small, or you can have a very elaborate, you know, what you're gonna see on, on a movie somewhere of, you know, the elaborate drug organizations. We had, we had four closed in twenty-two with four additional open, and we're just a little bit shy of that in twenty-three. We ended up with a grand total of five rather than eight of organizations. Now, you think of an organization as you gotta, you've got your drug dealer, the guy that's slinging the, slinging the fentanyl pills for five dollars apiece, or thirty dollars, or whatever it's going at that, that point in time. Well, that he, he is getting them from somebody else. So somebody, and that somebody else is getting them from somebody else. Our local drug dealer here in Holbrook or Winslow is not having a direct line to a drug cartel salesman south of the border. But the drugs are coming across the border one hundred percent. And then they're, they're going to Phoenix. From there, they're getting staged and broken up, and then they're coming to Flagstaff, or they're coming to a different location, and then they're landing here. So when you, when we get into the organization of that, we start working with the drug dealer here, and then we start working two or three different layers back. And then once we were able to wrap that up, that's, we consider that an organization that we have shut down. And so that's what those numbers mean. We had four closed. That means we closed, closed up four different little organizations around the county. Still had four open moving into twenty-three. So that's kind of what that means. Search warrants, search warrants are sixty-eight, sixty-one. They're pretty close to one another, and it may not seem like a whole lot as far as just, you know, for a year. Over there in twenty twenty-three, sixty-one search warrants. That's just how many warrants were written and served. That doesn't equate into how many hours of investigation in front of that actual search warrant, because a search warrant outlines in detail what the probable cause is in an affidavit in order to serve the warrant. Well, that takes a significant amount of investigation. So there's hours and hours and hours of casework in front of that search warrant. The search warrant is then written, which takes some time as well, and then it's served. And then you serve the warrant. That's the big stuff you see on, you know, we'll put on Facebook, a photograph, or everybody sees. And then afterwards is all the report writing that comes afterwards. So each one of those search warrants, there's hours of investigative work prior to and after. So... MCAT arrests, just a pie chart there on the, on the, MCAT arrests, that just the MCAT detectives put handcuffs on individuals or filed charges against somebody. So even though we were a little shorter-handed this year, we had a slight increase in our, in our arrests from, from twenty-two, but it's, it stays pretty consistent. And then here's just an overview of the agencies in the, the agencies in the county that we provide service for, provide support for upon their request. And the highest one is, the highest one here is the N C S O Patrol, and then Probation, and the Sholo Police Department. Winslow is also quite a ways up there. And then, and then Holbrook, Holbrook and Pintop are kind of down there on the, on the lower end. That must mean that your chief is doing a fantastic job keeping the dopers out of, out of Holbrook. Now with that, yeah. But you can kind of see how the guys are, are spread out throughout, throughout the county, from, from north to south. So I'm gonna give you a cou- a couple of quick little overviews of some, of some cases, and I'll, I'll get out of your, I'll get out of your, all this hair. In April, the, the detectives investigated a drug trafficking area in the southern part of the county, a drug trafficking organization, I'm sorry, in the southern part of the county. It was in partnership with Sholo P D and Pintop P D and all the agencies down south, to include D P S, the game unit, probation, and whatnot. It resulted in nineteen arrests, five search warrants on residents or hotel rooms, three warrants on electronic devices, one firearm seized, six hundred and forty-three grams of methamphetamine, and here's the kicker, the twenty-three hundred and seventy-five fentanyl pills were seized along with multiple items of drug paraphernalia. Several of the subjects that were arrested have been arrested multiple times for the same drug, the drug charges. The key thing there is the twenty-three hundred and seventy-five fentanyl pills. Who has that kind of fentanyl pills? Those are for sale. And that's exactly what was going on here, is there was an organization that had brought drugs to the Sholo area, and they were, they were selling drugs to people, a lot of them kids, in this Pintop Lakeside, Sholo, Snowflake Gardens. That's why everybody that was involved there was involved, because they're all, we all came together as a unified group, as a task force, and attacked them. That's twenty-three hundred and seventy-five potential fatalities, because each and every one of those pills has, has, has the ability to kill somebody.
Are you finding that some of these, some of the fentanyl is showing up in different forms? Like, I understand Skittles, they can lace Skittles with at least the liquid form. Are you finding that?
So it's not actual Skittles. They're, they're, they're mimicking the appearance of Skittles to market to the younger generation. So they're not actual Skittles that they're lacing them with. They're just making their product look like a Skittle. And, and yes, we're seeing, we are seeing marijuana THC wax. We're seeing marijuana edibles, marijuana in its, in its leaf form, being laced with fentanyl. Around here locally, the, the plants that are doing, that are manufacturing marijuana are not doing that. The, the drug traffickers, the cartels are getting a hold of this stuff, and they're lacing it and pushing it out. And when I say the cartels, not the Mexican cartels down there, but the people that are selling the dope on our side of the, on our side of the fence, or lacing it. But it's, it's, it's truly a threat. It absolutely is a threat. We're seeing it in more and more things.
Ken, I, I don't know if you'll address it, but could you touch on if you know the, the numbers of minors that have been, been either hospitalized or affected by this?
That's a fantastic question. I don't have that. I don't have that number. The, the Health Department, the Health Department has an opioid fatality review board where they address, obviously, fatalities, but then also review all overdoses in the county. And we have, in fact, the lieutenant over the Drug Task Force sits on that review board. I wish he was here tonight. He would probably have those right off the tip of his tongue. But, but every single one of them are reviewed through this, through this panel, which is a prosecutor's office, the courts, the Health Department, law enforcement, a lot of our non-governmental agencies, organizations as well, you know, Change Point, CBI, they, they're, it's a big group that looks at these things. I wish I had those numbers for you, sir. I don't. I'm sorry. In August, so we don't just always deal in drugs. In August, MCAT detectives received information of an individual who was sending sexually explicit material over the internet. We received this tip from the, from agents at the Homeland Security Investigations out of Flagstaff, who we have a partner with. We have one of our, one of our detectives attached to that task force over in Flagstaff and figure out that this individual doing these heinous crimes is right here in our county. So the MCAT detectives started working this, working this up, identified where this individual was at, where he worked, and was able to take him, take him into custody, charged with eleven counts of sexual exploitation of a minor. He is, he is awaiting trial. We actually, I'm gonna take a little wind out of the sail of a press release that should be coming out in the next couple of days from the Navajo County Attorney's Office, but he took a plea. He pled guilty and took a plea, remember seventeen? I think it's seventeen years DOC for his, for his actions. So that was a, a great success on finding this person, identifying this person, and getting him in custody, getting him off the streets. Also in August, the MCAT detectives assisted the Winslow Police Department with a burglary of the local business. The subject in this, in this case was a well-known person in the, in the drug trade in Winslow, and was, it was actively being investigated by the Drug Task Force. Uh, they served a warrant at his residence, and it resulted in three arrests and the recovery of most of the stolen items that they were, that this Winslow Police Department had listed missing. Those are just, uh, those are just a couple of, just skimming across the top of, of, uh... Oh, there's one more, I'm sorry. This one here, this was a great, I won't take a lot of time with this, but this was a great cooperative effort between the detention deputies in our jail and our detectives in the drug task force. So we had an individual that snuck some fentanyl into the jail. Uh, brought him in in manners that we don't want to talk about in this, in this form. All right, gets him into the jail. We have a rash of people that are showing signs and symptoms of fentanyl use. The detention deputies jumped on this, isolated everybody, tried to seize as much as they could, got the detectives involved in it. They started doing their investigation and rolled it right into a search warrant at a residence in Sun Valley. Uh, that we seized an additional twelve hundred and eighty-two fentanyl pills. And again, why does somebody in Sun Valley have twelve hundred and eighty-two fentanyl pills at their house? Those are for sale. They're for sale. There's just no other reason to have those. Along with several other weapons, uh, there was children in the home. DCS was, got, uh, got involved, and I don't know the current status of that investigation. That's a separate deal. But a total of six arrests were made from a guy trying to sneak drugs into, into our jail. And it is a daily fight to keep drugs out of that jail. But with that, I, I, again, I thank you guys very much for the opportunity to come in here and talk to you. I could literally take up your whole evening talking about the sheriff's office, about the outstanding work that the deputies do each and every day, and also talking about what these detectives and the drug task force do each and every day. These guys wish they had an eight-to-five job. They're out on holidays, weekends, rain, snow, the... They're out in it all. And, uh, and they're always available for call, and they do fantastic work. We're all very proud of them. With that, I'll open up for any questions or comments you guys may have.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Listen, our, so you guys have a website out there. Is, is, is that what you were talking about?
It's an app.
It's an app on your phone that you can download.
And so what's that called?
It's the...
So do you have a, a Android phone or an Apple phone?
Apple.
Okay, so you go to your Apple App Store.
Police Snyder.
You go to your Apple, uh, your app, your app store. And if I'm misleading them, Tori, please, just be here telling me.
I can, um, I can send it in.
That'd be great, yeah. Send it to...
So, okay, so that's totally different than what you guys are posting on Facebook, because I'm loving what you're putting on Facebook. I mean, it's, we're seeing all your arrests, we're seeing everything you're doing. So this is totally something different then, right?
This is totally different, but it's connected. So the app, the app, you'll be able to, it's gonna show up on an icon on your phone. It's gonna have our star, and it'll say Navajo County. You press that thing there, it takes it right to, it takes you right to a screen where you have multiple options. If you want to know if your neighbor has been thrown in jail last night, you put in there, you hit recent arrests, and it'll show up the twenty-four-hour roster. If you want to know who else is in the jail, you go to another, it's in that same group there, it'll give you everybody that's in the jail. Uh, it gives you the sex offender, uh, the sex offender map. Oh my gosh, what else is on there?
Active warrants.
Active, active arrest warrants, and that's just in one section. We're also tied in with Navajo County Emergency Management. So, so you go to one of their, go to one of their buttons on, from our app. It'll tell you if there's road closures or, or serious weather issues coming. You need to contact, say, for some reason, you need to get ahold of, uh, of Lieutenant Van Winkle. You can, you can go to the directory and find Lieutenant Van Winkle, and it'll give you his email address and, and desk phone number, so you can get ahold of him.
Very good.
So there's just, and then, and then there's also a section on there where you can go, and it'll take you to all of our news feeds from, from the, uh, from Twitter. Uh, they're not calling it Twitter anymore, but Twitter and Instagram and Facebook. So you can, you can access all of those news feeds that Tori puts out on all the social media.
So you're, you're gonna show us?
She already sent it.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, we appreciate that, and we'll follow up with that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I do. So the fentanyl liquid and powder form? I mean, it might be a dumb question, but are these pharmaceutical grade? Or are these, like, being made in someone's backyard?
These are me, being, these are being made in China. And they're being shipped to South America, Mexico, down in there. And from there, they're either making pills, or they're pressing this, they're packaging this, this powder up, and then shipping the powder across the border interior, interior to the United States. So then they can make the, um, they can make the, the pills here locally.
That was my other question is, do we know, like, where it is originating from? And so is that where some of the funds for border, the money that we're getting from Border Patrol kind of helps with funding?
So the, the, the border money is coming from the state.
Yeah, but does that coincide with, like, the drugs that are coming from, not from the US?
Yes, that, those, that funding that we're getting through MCAT and whatnot is to help local law enforcement to combat the border issue.
Okay.
It's like, as we sit right here in Holbrook, we're approximately two hundred miles from the border. But we are, we feel the impact of that border right here in Holbrook with the drugs that are coming through. We don't have the, the human aspect of it that Yuma County, Cochise County, those counties right along the border where they're, where we have immigrants coming straight across. We don't, we're not, we're not being, uh, we're, we're not being impacted like that in even a humanitarian issue. Sheriff and I have been down on that border. It is unbelievable what is, what is going on, on that, down on that border. Unbelievable. We're fortunate we're not dealing with the human impact here, but the humans are, the humans that we are dealing with are being smuggled through and to other places, most likely for, for modern-day slavery. You know, sex trafficking or what have you. But the humanitarian issues where we have them coming in, we have no services for them. We don't have, we're not dealing with that in this county yet. Not to say that it's not coming.
So what we're getting on I-40, are those arrests made that tied back into...
The cartel?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's not local people that were having issues? It's, like...
Right, so the numbers that I showed you there, it's a combination of, of drugs that have been seized here. They were, they were destined and being sold here in our county, but then also being trafficked through. It's hard to break down what, which, you know, this, this group of drugs or this, you know, a certain percentage of it was, was traveling through us, because sometimes we don't always get that data. We get it here, sometimes it was destined here, but we can't really get that information. Or sometimes it was even destined for Gallup. Uh, or it could be destined for Chicago. Sometimes we don't know what the destination is, but one hundred percent of it is coming, originates, uh, in Phoenix that comes from across the border. We're not getting anything out of California that I'm aware of, or from, you know, across the ocean that's coming up through. And then the DEA is telling, is reporting that seventy-five to eighty percent of the fentanyl that is seized in our country, internally in our country, all over the place, comes across the Arizona border. So we feel a very strong, uh, need to do our, our, our part in helping to protect the rest of the country with our interdiction efforts. Because every load that's stopped that doesn't make it to Missouri or to Chicago or Seattle, wherever, is just that much more pills that are not going into a community. I didn't say that very right.
Well, we appreciate you coming in. Sorry, we have one other couple of questions for you.
So the fentanyl liquid, why is it, um, is it less detectable? Or why the, why is it...
So they can go and put this in a, they can go and put this in a water bottle, stick it in the console, who's gonna know any different? It's clear. It's a clear liquid. They could put it in a cooler in the back of the car. Who's, who's gonna know what it is? And you go to a checkpoint or you get pulled over by law enforcement, it looks normal. They're just different, they're different concealment and smuggling methods that, that are being implemented to beat us all the time. And typically, they are a step or two ahead of us because we adapt to what they're, what the bad guy is doing. That answer your question?
So, one second, Councilman Dixon had a question along with a...
So you said that, uh, a lot of the drugs are coming from Communist China. Was that fentanyl you're talking about? And what is the percentage of that coming from Communist China?
The, the, the fentanyl, uh, main ingredient of fentanyl in the counterfeit drug business, there's coming from China. That information's coming from our federal government, letting us know that's where it's coming from. Obviously, us in Navajo County, we have a hard, we can't enforce that. But it hits, it comes, however it comes, to South America, Mexico. And from there, it's either packaged up as, as a, as a powder. Now we're seeing it in a liquid, or they will send it to one of their pill-pressing plants. Say that fast. And then they'll start, they'll just press them into pills. They're very easy to, to conceal. They can stuff them anywhere in a car, and then they shotgun it into Phoenix, and in bulk. And then from Phoenix, it gets broke up into smaller amounts and then shipped out in multiple different methods. Airplane, mail, car, what have you, it gets shipped all over in that method.
Ken, you've provided us with statistics for twenty-two and twenty-three. Do you have the same, statistics on these same drugs going back several years? Like, at least five years?
I have them going back, uh, we have them going back to about twenty-nineteen. And in, I can tell you, in twenty-seventeen, I was a, I was a Investigations Commander for the Department of Public Safety stationed in Phoenix, and our primary job was drug trafficking organizations. In twenty-seventeen, we were seeing the very first bit of fentanyl coming in. We had not, fentanyl had not, it was new, and it was scary because it wasn't something we were used to. Uh, I remember setting up a deal. It was gonna be five thousand pills. We were trying to purchase from a, from a bad player. Five thousand pills. And at that point in time, that would have been the largest fentanyl seizure in the state. We're stopping cars with a hundred thousand pills in the trunk, and it's like, no big deal. So in Navajo County, in twenty-seventeen, our fentanyl seizure was zero. In twenty-eighteen, it was right around thirty thousand pills. In twenty, I might be off a year here. Twenty, Tori, can you help me out? I'll shoot that.
She can't help it.
She can't help it. Anyway, we jumped in increments from thirty to fifty to, I want to say it was six hundred thousand, and then to the point where we're at two-point-one million. But they have literally jumped in, not just doubling, quadrupling numbers since about the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen period.
And is it because it's so much cheaper? I mean, it's exceeding all these other rates.
Yes. Yes, so, so in twenty-seventeen, that five thousand fentanyl pills was gonna cost me fifty thousand dollars. That comes out to something around five dollars a pill in bulk. If today, you can buy, you can buy one single fentanyl pill in Phoenix for pennies because the, the market is just, it's just in bulk. But we can go to Phoenix, and it's a lucrative, it's a lucrative business. We can go to Phoenix and buy, you know, for one cent a pill and bring it to Holbrook and sell it for anywhere from five to fifteen to thirty cents a pill. At one point in time, it was thirty dollars a pill in Winslow. So it just depends on the market, and it fluctuates worse than Wall Street. But it's day-to-day, but you can, you can, you can quadruple or three, three hundred times your money by moving, by moving these things.
All right, Councilman Black, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, just one quick question. Maybe you can't respond to this, but hopefully you can. But talking to BNSF employees, if it just come from one or two, I'd just say that's rumor. But talking to five or six of them, is there any truth to our trains being held up almost weekly by the cartel?
There is, there is an active investigation going on with thefts occurring on BNSF property and their, and their trains. This is, this, this comes, this starts in California and stretches through our county into New Mexico and beyond. But yes, there is an organization right now that is targeting trains.
All right. Well, we appreciate you. We really could stay all night and ask you questions and... Chess in your, no, it's not boring. It's, it's important to know what's going on in our community, and we appreciate you being here as well. We like having county close, and we appreciate the support also with our public police department, so...
You have a fantastic chief, and we love the partnership that we have with the Holbrook Police Department.
Well, we appreciate all of you guys, so... All right, we'll have you back sooner next time, so I'm good?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number, um, B. Uh, we've invited Amanda Ormond. Um, she is with the Arizona State University Just Energy Transition. She's the one helping us lead the charge for the chartering the future of a public community visioning session. So Amanda's here tonight just to kind of give us a quick overview of what to expect next week. We'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mayor Council, Amanda Ormond. I came and presented maybe four or five months ago to talk about coal plant closures and some work that we're doing with other cities around Navajo and Apache and Coconino County. We are going to work with the city doing a visioning session that we've done in two other cities. The idea is that we want to bring the community together to think about what do they want to build in the future. Uh, the coal plant closure is gonna have a very significant impact on many people in, in the region. And what happens is that people get kind of depressed about what's gonna happen. These visioning sessions are really intended to be positive engagements. What we find is we bring people in, we ask them a, a series of questions. So we are doing two different visioning sessions. We're doing one on the sixth of March, so next Wednesday, and then we're doing one on the twenty-eighth of March. They're gonna run from six to nine, so they're kind of long. We're providing food. ASU has the resources to provide food because we don't want people hungry. So we'll provide food, and then we'll run these sessions. They're very interactive. We're gonna ask your community members a couple things in session one. One is, what do you like about the community? Why are you living here? You know, what is it that, that keeps you here, that, that you want to be here for? Another question we ask is, what do you want to preserve? And what we found in doing these sessions, by starting that way, you kind of build the positive, because people talk about what they love about their community. The second set of sessions, we, we ask, what assets do you have that might be able to be used to build towards the future? And then what do we need to secure to build towards that future? In both these sessions, we have some discussions as a group. Then we break off into such, into smaller groups to let people talk about what they're thinking about and express their views. We use a dot system. We put things up on charts, on walls. We let people come up and rank them so that, so you get a good prioritization of what people really care about. Um, and what we found is that they're, they're very engaging. For the council, I think it's important because you're starting into your general plan review. So this information should feed nicely into some of that work that you're gonna do to think about what is it important to your community. We will deliver a report after the two, uh, visioning sessions that will just summarize what was found from the public. Um, as we've mentioned, I think, when I was here last time, and, and the mayor knows this, there's a lot of federal monies out there. So this will help us triangulate on what, what is the interest of the community? So ASU can work with the city and think about what grants are available. How can we go after some of the money to try to implement some of the things we've heard? Um, the mayor shared a meeting yesterday that you're already thinking about, you know, ponds, your community center, and some other things. And so we think that you've already got kind of a basis of some of the things you want to build, but always good to throw it open to the public to hear what they're thinking about. And, uh, the, the person that's gonna lead is, I'll be here for these sessions, but also we have a professor named Lauren Keeler. She's an expert in communication, and she does a really nice job to bring people together. So we're really excited that the community decided to do this and love all your participation in engaging. So, uh, you're not gonna have to do much. We want you to come, participate, engage, put your, put your dots up. uh, and we'll take care of kind of all the logistics and moving people around and, and getting people to, to discuss what they're thinking about.
Just a quick question, um, just to clarify, and all have, come from you instead of just me, we had some citizens concerned, what is the city paying for this service, right, to do this, so if you can address that for us?
Sure, so, um, ASU is, is doing this free, so, uh, ASU had gotten a grant from the U.S. Economic Development Agency to look at repowering the Choya Power Plant and the Coronado Plant, so ASU had gone and gotten a federal grant. As part of that, we have money to be able to engage different communities. ASU also gets fund, or our, our Just Energy Transition Center also gets funding from ASU General Fund, and we also have foundation funding that we use. So, we have a variety of sources that, that we use to do work like this, because this is, we wanna help the region think about its, its economic future. I also wanted to mention, no, I forgot. So, there is no cost to, to you all to be able to do this, and the, and the report is free. I mean, we're, we're a research institution, right? We wanna see the, the community thrive, so we do have funds to be able to do this. Oh, I know what I wanted to mention, sorry. Um, we have been working with Rounds Consulting, which is a, a state, uh, economic development consultant, for about six months to develop a economic development study around the Choya Power Plant. That, that study originated by working with the city of, of Saint, I'm sorry, Joseph City, and having these convening sessions, and asking, what do you think we could do with the plant and the area? So, we're at the tail end of the study, it should be available next week. And what we did is we broadened it, instead of saying just the power plant and, um, and Joe City, we broadened it to kinda more to the I forty corridor. So, it's not gonna talk specifically about Holbrook or Winslow, but it's gonna talk about the region. What are some of the economic development opportunities? So, we'll get you this report, happy to answer any questions about it. It's, our job, I think, is to hear from the communities what you need, go off, do some research, come back. Uh, I was talking in a meeting the other day, we like to co-create, right? It's not our job to say what a community should do, but we have a lot of resources and research that we can do. So, uh, we wanna be able to bring materials to you, so you can consider as the elected officials what to do with this information.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for some questions.
So, so the March sixth and March twenty-eighth meetings are both basically identical? They're just two, the, the same meeting, the same sessions, or continuation of one?
Yes, so, the two are the entire package. So, we're gonna ask one set of questions on the first set of meetings. We'll ask other sets of questions on the other ones. So, really, is it helpful to have people attend both, not mandatory, certainly by any means, but helpful?
Do we have, or do you have anything available that can kinda, we can give out to the public, so that they are prepared for the questions?
So, I don't really think that's necessary, we do have a flyer that we've been promoting, and I think we have some information that, some of the questions on there. Um, is that, I haven't seen the final copy of the flyer.
Oh, yeah, so, it's right here, so, but it does, it has the topics for session one and for session two, and this is what we've been advertising on social media. No, you're writing down the questions. Yes, I, we discovered that, so, we may have a conflict with the March twenty-eighth, and we will, um, discuss that with you soon, so.
We have one week, months between the sessions, but, uh, we can work on whatever schedule you want. It doesn't need to be a Wednesday for us, so, yeah, you can let us know what's, what's convenient, we'll figure it out.
No, we appreciate that, so, any further questions for me, yes?
So, the last time you were here was with Janet Dean, correct?
Janet Dean was here at the same time, yes.
Yes, yes. So, the Choya Power Plant, are they, are they gonna level that after it's shut down?
So, uh, that is the purpose of why we wanted to look at repowering and repurposing. Normally, when a coal plant closes, like Navajo Generating Station, they demolish the whole plant. They, they saved a couple buildings and some water piping, uh, pumping, but besides that, they took the plant down. Our premise of going and getting a grant from EDA to do this work was, there are water pumps and electrical systems, and, you know, kitchens, and buildings, and roadways, there are so many assets in the plant. And so, our, the premise of kind of the research we're doing is, could you repurpose some of that equipment? APS owns the, the Choya Plant, SRP owns the Coronado Plant, we don't own it, but we wanna do the research part to say, what could it become? I just got a chance to tour the Choya Plant today, talking with SRP folks about, you know, do, would you pull down all these buildings? And they're like, there are a lot of components that are important. Um, they have, they have a kitchen, a commercial kitchen in that building, because they have a restaurant on site.
I think you meant Coronado, not Choya.
Coronado, yes, sorry. Uh, and so, there's interest in, could we use that kitchen? So, APS has said they want, I think, till twenty twenty-eight to make a decision about what they're gonna do with the plant. And the energy situation has changed quite a bit in Arizona, there's a lot of growth in energy. So, we need to wait to see what they wanna say, but the rail spur that's there is a really important rail spur. So, I think one of the pieces ASU wants to do next is look at the rail line, Winslow, Holbrook, um, across to see, you know, what could the region do if it had some access to the rail line?
So, Choya's not gonna be, uh, repurposed for biomass or solar that we've been hearing about?
So, renewables will definitely go in any area, because they already are, and they will use the transmission, but they won't need the power plant site itself. Um, APS, when, we, we had a long list of technologies that, that the Joe City citizens gave us, and we took it to APS. They said biomass is not cost effective, they don't see that that's a future, but they will not definitively close the door on anything, I think, until twenty twenty-eight.
And just to clarify, she's not a spokesman for APS, so those questions will be addressed.
I understand that, but, but Randy, we, a couple years ago, we approved the, the right of way for the, uh, solar to go right past the petroglyph bar, part, do you remember that, two or three years ago?
I don't, I don't remember part of that.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, Mike was here.
There is gonna be renewable development in the area for sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, on behalf of the city, we do appreciate, um, ASU Jet Center coming up and, and supporting us in this, this endeavor, so.
Okay.
We appreciate, and we will see you next, Wednesday at six P M. Anybody interested, we prefer an RSVP, because they are providing food, so that just helps us make sure we have enough food for everybody. So, food will be served at five thirty, and then the session will start at six P M, so, thank you.
Everybody's welcome, thank you.
We appreciate, thank you so much, so. All right, moving on to item number C, Personnel Policy, two oh seven Weapons in the Workplace Authorization Form Review. We've, uh, asked manager, interim manager Sullivan to look into this and reach out to our attorneys. Um, I'd like to turn the time over to him to see what kind of response we received.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Council, we may just wanna table this, um, 'cause, uh, when I, uh, first started taking this to, uh, the attorneys to come up with some authorization process, before we even took it to chief or something like that, that attorneys didn't, um, recommended that they didn't like that policy at all. So, they had come up with another policy, and I apologize that, um, with our emails going down last week, I didn't get that information to you in time. So, I did give you, um, a piece of paper of what the attorneys recommended this to say. And then, um, again, we can't make any decisions tonight, but if you guys wanna discuss it, we can. If not, uh, we could put it on, uh, a future agenda, discuss it further, once you guys have time to read it. And then we could work with the verbiage from there on, 'cause we, once we do work on verbiage, we will have to do a resolution to, to pass, uh, change the policy.
Let's clarify, the paper we have in front of us was verbiage straight from the attorney, correct?
The attorney, uh, recommended that verbiage.
So, the attorney recommended no firearms in the workplace?
Pretty much, 'cause he, he just recommended, um, he said, the way our policy is written, especially that first sentence, just opens the city up to a lot of liability. And, um, by, um, expressing our concerns, I mean, it's a lot more verbiage going this way, but it does spell it out a lot better, and basically just says, yeah, I mean, it's an issue, and we don't, we don't wanna open ourselves to liability at all.
Councilman Dixon? In reading this first paragraph, um, it says, weapons, it, it kinda insinuates this is pertaining to employees, but would this apply to the general public?
Well, thi- this is a personnel policy, so we are talking about personnel right now.
Okay, okay, 'cause you're not gonna turn this into a gun-free zone, right?
No, 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 no.
The mass shootings occur.
Yeah, no, no, there, I mean, we're strictly talking about personnel and personnel issues here.
When it states inside the workplace, I mean, we have a handful of employees that work indoors, and the majority of them work outdoors.
Well, that's why, that's why it starts to talk about, um, vehicles and those kinda things.
That kind of opens my, is this contradicting? Because the one that we have in place now says you can with, you know, approval and in your vehicle, whatnot. And then this one says pretty much not at all, 'cause you're opening yourself up for some type of liability. Is that contradicting itself?
Well, that would be the suggestion, I, so we're saying, we'd get rid of our current one, and go with this one in place, so.
So, was the old one approved by our attorney? Like, did the attorney?
Well, I, I don't know, I, I, I can't. Uh, somewhere down the line, it was probably approved, or, uh, passed. Either way, it was, it would've been passed by council, too, so, yeah.
Do you know how long that policy's, was, has been in place?
I don't know, for sure, I think, I think when this Weapons in the Workplace was discussed, probably would've been two thousand eight, probably, sometime.
Well, you guys said you did a review about a few years back.
Yeah, and it was edited then, it was.
I think I was the only one in council at that time.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know.
So, I like, uh, Mr. Sullivan's idea, since this is the first time we're seeing this, why don't we go, you know, take the time to go through it?
And again, uh, you know, this is one, one attorney's opinion, uh, and we, we're still, as council can change it, add, subtract, however we want. I mean, you ask ten attorneys, you're gonna get ten different hats in front of, ti- ten different attorneys, so. You know, it's, it's, it's still your guys' policy and the city's policy that we have to enforce. Whether we, uh, open ourselves up to liabilities or not, whatever, it's still the policy that we have to work through.
Can we get, um, any feedback from the chief?
No, have we, the, the chief-
Chief wasn't here last time, so, and, and he, he's kind of read through some things a little bit.
So, chief, would you mind coming back the next time it's on the, um, agenda, come back with your thoughts? And your concerns?
You have any comments?
Do all your officers carry on and off the job?
I don't know if they carry it off.
But while they're, they're required to while they're?
Right, while on duty, yes. When we go to court, things like that, we carry. Off duty's a personal choice, if they wanna carry off duty, they still have to abide by our policy if they carry off duty, but it's their personal choice.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Again, I'm, I'm sure that our attorney looks at things from a constitutional perspective.
Correct, correct, I mean, uh, thi- this, this one was again from Justin Pierce. We met him last, two weeks ago, he's with the risk pool, so this is the risk pool, um.
They're the, be the ones defending us if we get in trouble.
Right, exactly.
Speaking of the risk pool, did we get any information on any of those, uh, workplace trainings? Like, workplace hurdles?
I ha- I have not yet, that is, it is on the list.
Okay.
So, I know there were internet issues and emails were down for quite a few days, and so, yes.
They just took off, they went to their work, and they went through vectors, personal, per, vector, personal, I don't know.
So, maybe, uh, Mr. Sullivan, we can look into counties, see what their programs, they're using their, um, for their, um, training?
They might be at the same risk pool as others.
Yep, the, uh, the school district too does, does their training also.
Oh, that's true, yeah, so, yeah, the school district's another good resource.
Right.
And if we can tag team any of those, save some costs, but I do think it's important.
I know ours were online, so, uh.
All right, any other questions? Not this, would be just a discussion item, so we'll come back, uh, with some more information, and we'll keep going. All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go into item number eight, summary of current events, um, just quickly for myself. Um, myself and Mr. Sullivan were able to go to Joseph City yesterday, as Amanda alluded to. Um, there was a federal funding summit, uh, sponsored by Navajo, Apache, and Coconino Counties. They brought in, um, there were supposed to have been nine federal funders and five regional. Ended up with five or six federal funders, agencies at the table. And we were able just to, just throw some ideas out, there was nothing, it wasn't any specific grants or anything, but we said, hey, these are potential projects we'd like to see done, what kind of funding's out there? And like Amanda mentioned, there's a lot of federal funding right now, and so, um, we got some ideas on, you know, if it's tourism, we go talk to these guys, if it's transportation-based, we just made those connections with those networks, um, with those face-to-face, and they said they will help us, lead us to the right people for the right grants moving forward. I was also able to meet with quite a few of them today, they were doing just a tour from, um, Winslow to the Petro five four, so they stopped at our museum for about twenty-five, thirty minutes. I was able to give them a little tour of the museum and talk a little bit about, um, economics of Holbrook, what's going on there. So, just another great chance to talk to these individuals personally, and it's making those connections. So, most grants will tell you, if you wanna go for a grant, they say, call us, talk us through before you submit the grant, so we can help you. So, they're there to assist, we found also multiple agencies yesterday at this meeting that would be able to help us, uh, free of charge, to help us identify grants and even help write some of these grants. So, as we start doing our general plan and our strategic planning and our goals for the next few years, we can take those ideas and ask these agencies to help us identify those grants, and hopefully find us some funding. Because there is, and one USDA grant said the minimum was a ten million dollar grant. That would be fantastic, so, and they said some of, you know, the projects we were throwing out there, they said there was some potential, you know, that we could do it. And they said the more we collaborate with other organizations as well, um, they said you could ask for fifteen million, then divide it up between communities or organizations, and that kinda gives you some power behind. So, things to think about. And with that, we have Cinderella being performed with the Holbrook High School musical, and it starts this weekend. I believe it's Friday and Saturday, don't tell my brother, I don't know the specific dates.
The first, the second?
Think of first and second, and then the sixth and seventh.
Seven and eighth.
No, it's seventh and eighth, thank you, not the sixth, 'cause our planning session will be there on that Wednesday night. Um, we may have some Cinderella backgrounds, but during our visioning session, but that just gets us thinking outside the box, right? Anyways, with that, that is all I have, we'll turn the time over to Vice Mayor Nelson.
I got to attend the NACOG meeting last Thursday, and, and, uh, it was just kinda business as usual, nothing really affecting us.
We appreciate your attendance, so. Councilman Black?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Pack?
No.
Councilman Dixon?
Nothing for me.
Councilwoman Defoea?
Nothing for me.
Councilwoman Pacheco?
Other than the last, at our last meeting, I'd asked if we could look into, um, Ms. Morella's issue, and if we, what came about that? I know was gonna, the plan, or the, um, code enforcer from, was gonna look into it, I just don't know where we are on that.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Sullivan may address that in his thing, but if not, we'll make sure, 'cause I know we have him scheduled, I think, in April to come and present. 'Cause he's working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but, good question, we do need those follow-ups. All right, anything additional?
Nope, oh, no, sorry.
Thank you, no, all right, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. We, we had gone around the kiosk that we put on, uh, West End and, uh, up on top of the town, and I, the posters in those kiosks, I don't think have been changed since, um, since they were built and, and put up there. So, we went around and bought, um, bought posters on vinyl, so hopefully they'll last longer, and we've installed those in the kiosks, so those will look, uh, better to our, our tourists coming through town. Uh, I just wanna reiterate, meeting yesterday with the federal grant writers, we had some great opportunities to, um, meet grant writers, potential suitors from the federal, federal funding summit. And, uh, I, there's a, a company out there called Local First. They are, um, really into trying to help communities write grants, get grants, look for grants. So, um, th- there's some good opportunities there, uh, that could help Holbrook. write grants, get grants, look for grants, so, um, th- there's some good opportunities there, uh, that could help Holbrook. I, we also met with Chris Pastertz, he is the economic, um, rail AZ quarter, uh, developer for Navajo County, um, and he's been working on, uh, like, an economic overview, and it kinda ties into Navajo Ca- or, um, the plant closing, and he's coming up with, he's came up with some economic overviews, and really, a, a big piece of that is workforce housing. And, um, he, he presented us some, some research that they've done, not only in Holbrook, but for the whole county, in assessing the housing, um, situation, and, and really the, the, um, the cost of housing and so forth, 'cause we're not the only ones in the county done with this issue. And so, we have s- some of that information, um, there, uh, Rail AZ has come up with like a plan on some ideas of, of some things we could work on to help that housing, and we've already started that, so, um, with Barbara applying for the grants for emergency funds, and hopefully, pretty soon, CDs B G funds, I mean, I know that's starting at the, the ground level, but it is starting somewhere, and I, I look forward to, to some of those changes and, and really cleaning up some of these dilapidated buildings. Uh, the last couple weeks, I've been really, um, working hard on the budget, I've pretty much had to recreate that whole, whole budget, and, and I, um, I was really trying to make it, start all over and make it look, uh, like, uh, prior city managers. It seems like the council really liked that format, so I've been rebuilding that, and I've really needed to get that information set, so, um, at the end of March, I'm able to come to you guys with resolutions on the one-time override and the alternative expenditure limitation. Also, so, the, a couple things are coming, um, with Joe Jarvis and P N Z. Uh, Joe Jarvis has really been working well with P N Z lately, um, getting some updated codes, um, working on, um, uh, like a redevelopment plan with StanTech, um, and part of that plan is rezoning some of our places downtown, identifying some areas where we could maybe change the, the zoning requirements to allow for better housing to come in. And on top of that, uh, we will, we'll ask P N Z and Joe Jarvis to look at maybe the trailer situation, maybe change that, that, that could be a recommendation, coming to council soon. I'm still working on some kind of system to, um, notify residents of issues. I'm trying to figure out to do, if, if it's more cost-effective to go through a website or to go through the phone system that we currently have, so I'm kinda working both angles on that. I'm kind of, uh, waiting to see what, what is more cost-effective. But in the meantime, Robbie has, has said if we have anything that we need to post, Robbie would, would be able to push that through the school system. And, and right now, the school system probably has way more phone numbers than we do and data, and that's part of our problem, is we'll have to build that whole system out. Met, I've been meeting with APS regularly to, um, work on getting the, the light pole set for the lidoleak field. Uh, I was supposed to meet with Jerry today, and he never called me, so hopefully tomorrow or the, and by the end of the week, we'll, I'll get more information on that. Uh, the remodel at the P D, I think, is getting pretty close, we've fu- uh, got new glass installed in the, in the front end, and now that that's placed, we're, we'll be able to start working on some of the last, uh, little bit of the remodel in there. That's all I have, oh, I, um, and I wanted the council to know that I, I will be taking spring break off, so I won't be available.
Alright, thank you for that. Alright, moving on to item number ten, submission of writ petition for items not on the agenda.
There are none.
There are none. Item number eleven, adjournment, your motion? We have a motion?
I'll take it.
I'm just taking it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, we're adjourned at seven fifteen, we're gonna go ahead and take a five-minute, uh, recess, and then we will go into our work session, and we'll go ahead and move down to the table, and then we'll move on to our work session at seven twenty.
Nancy has a point.
She does the ten years in that, and then.
I know, it's fifty years.
I mean, there are trainers in Holbrook, fifty years old, people are living. I, uh, but then it gave you that.
What are they gonna be using, those, the, those ones that they're renovating?
All the stuff I used to do. And I don't.
Unless they come long, is it gonna be long? It should only be short-term unless they come and ask for a zoning change.
So, so, that's still supposed to stay a motel, though, right?
Motels get away with us sometimes, 'cause they say, oh.
And don't forget, we're out of session right now. And so, how about those, those, uh, tiny, uh, no, those, uh, you know, they were, they started building some real small houses over there, or, I never finished it, well, that was a veteran's thing, right? And they got them, and they were supposed to put some more of them up, and then all of a sudden, the outfits gone, and nobody knows what's going on. I think I'm like, we're trying to track teachers to come here, policemen to come here, where are they gonna live? The problem with that, that's such a long-range thing, too, it's not so, it affects overnight, either. But, look, it wasn't very, very, I mean, we started building Choya, but. We're the petrophi forest. Those, 'cause I remember Don Kill wanted me to come in and buy them. And, uh, I remember who built that.
We don't get too many of them.
And at the time, I just wasn't, but it was for sale, and it, oh, no, it was the Air Force. The Air Force is moving out, and that was their housing, and they were selling it, and, uh, yeah, that's who had that, was the Air Force. And it sat back there for quite a while. Yeah, yeah, and we thought, well, no, we're gonna bring the price down, and then. I, I still don't think a lot of them are, I don't think it's full, my wife, it was two years, and that's why we did it all. And so, it also included all the lots behind there, so we thought, well, we'll build it.
Well, did you bring us all snacks, Tim?
Well, I don't know how old this is, I think it's been in there for a couple years.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
But you can have, you can, you can have it all, Terry.
Is that Kathleen's?
I don't know. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think you're good, I think Kathleen's right there. Randy's not in the work session.
I'll give the head people.
That's, uh, Arsenius. I wear two of these on my head, one in my pocket.
And then you can't find it.
Two or three in the living room, two in my office, yeah, I can't find it.
I have those glasses, like, making sure my dad comes over, and I think he's always, like, leaving glasses everywhere.